...pledge of allegiance, and then we'll follow the pledge of allegiance if you'll remain standing for the invocation brought this evening by Roger Shannon, councilperson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give our heads, please. Father, again, we thank you so much for this day you've given us, but we do ask that you protect our families, our police, fire, ambulance, and all those in need. Our thoughts and prayers go to the families of those fallen officers. And again, we ask this in our Lord's precious name, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Well, one of the high pleasures of being mayor is, again, to bring proclamations, and this proclamation is here to my part. It is fixed a leak a week in Bonner Springs.
Rink.
Or the leak department.
Or the leak department. Here in charge of leaks.
Oh, that was good.
The proclamation reads, whereas the city of Bonner Springs encourages the wise use and conservation of our water, and whereas the Environmental Protection Agency provides educational information via the Water Sense Program to support water conservation, and whereas household leaks account for nearly 1 trillion gallons of water wasted in the United States each year, and whereas an American home can waste, on average, 10,000 gallons of water every year due to running toilets, dripping faucets, and other household leaks, and whereas the EPA Water Sense Program identifies the fixing of leaks as a key element of conserving water as a precious commodity. Now therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, proclaim the week of March 19 through 25, 2018, as Fix a Leak Week. And the city of Bonner Springs interures all residents and businesses to use water efficiently, check plumbing fixtures, and irrigation systems for leaks, and to fix water leaks and dripping faucets. Congratulations and thanks for luck.
And it's a good time to change your fire alarm batteries. That's something.
For the benefits of some of the new council members, I'd like to introduce staff. So, he actually manages all the distribution systems for the city of Bonner Springs, includes overseeing our leaks, and then also our booster stations, customer service, inspections, locates backloads, multiple lists of things that we shove on its plates.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving right along, our second item on the agenda is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and address the city council this evening?
Honorable Mayor Harrington and esteemed council members, thank you so very much. My name is Alicia Hooks, and I'm from the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and I have worked there in the office of Director of Entrepreneurship, and recently they added the Workforce Center to my area and are about to add continuing education to my area. So, one of the things that I'm doing, and I'll get with Amber a little bit later, but one of the things I'm doing is going around introducing myself, so when I come back knocking on your door again, you'll know who I am. But I feel that it's our job as a community college to reach out to city governments, local governments, and identify what is your vision for your community, for your constituency, and then seeing how we can identify our resources to help undergird that. So, for example, the Fix a Week leak, I thought that was so interesting. How many of our students would love to come out into your community and actually do that for your citizens, for those who were unable to do it? And that's what they're in school being trained for. So, there's those opportunities or anything about growth and expansion, business and industry, we are a partner. That's the vision that we have, and just to see how we can do this, how we can help you do what you want to do. So, just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you for allowing me the time, and I'll be seeing you shortly.
Very good. Thank you, Alicia. Workforce development is very important, and it's very important for the businesses and entities in our community to have those things available to them to supply a competent workforce, so thank you very much. Moving on, is there anyone else that would like to stand and address the city council? And I'm going to have to talk quieter because we have a new microphone, and I can hear it really well.
I thought it was my hearing.
Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion concerning the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the February 26, 2018 meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and police vehicle purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. Moving second, is there anything to be pulled from the staff, from the citizens? Questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none? Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Very good. Congratulations on the police vehicle purchases. I read over this. It looks like a lot of thought has gone into this reorganization of our policy concerning fleet vehicle purchases, so the... Are those the new ones that I see around town already?
We have one of those so far.
So far, so there'll be more of those, similar to the same design and looks like from what I read.
Yes, it'll be standardized across sports, so as far as you see it, the black and white graphics will be standard.
I've already received compliments on that car. Yeah, they really thought it looked like a police car ought to look, so... I don't know how long... There's some old timers here, but I can remember back to the yellow police cars in Bonner Springs. So, that's a long time, and we had police vans at one time, too, yellow police vans. That's way... It's before some of these people you were born. I don't mean to say that.
Admittedly, I have no clue what you're talking about.
But I appreciate that. It does look very... It does look very professional, so, yeah, very good. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, which are pool repairs and painting bid award. Staff.
Skip Dawes, Parks and Recreation. Mayor and council, I'm bringing to you about recommendations to award a bid for repair, sandblasting, and painting of the pool shell at the Aquatic Park for $72,456. The work will be done by DEM Enterprises LLC. Tonight, we may have Justine Spease, Recreation Coordinator, in charge of Parks Aquatics, and she's going to pass out some pictures of the repairs and the paint that needs to be replaced, so that you're aware, you get some visuals of it as I speak. The Aquatic Park's been open since 2006, so that's 12 seasons. We're going into our 13th season, and is in need of repairs by a trained and specialized company. We've done the repairs or the minor repairs in painting over the years. We've done sections at a time, but it's time that it gets a good coat on there by a professional. And so, Justine attended the pre-bid meeting with prospective companies on Monday, February the 19th, and the paint manufacturer also was in attendance at that to answer any questions and go over, make sure everybody understood exactly what we wanted done, and the company can come out and start with approval tonight on March the 13th, give us time to get this done by April the 20th, and get water in it by May the 1st. It was budgeted at $150,000. That's the quote we got last year for paint and repairs, 100 for painting, 50 for repairs. We put that together in the bid, so we just have one company coming out there and doing it. It helps with the timeframe, and one company can't blame the other that paint's coming up, the repair wasn't done right, and vice versa. So, we have one company coming out, and it came in at $72,400. Four companies actually bid on it, and another one was approximately $74,000. The next, the third one was in the hundreds, low hundreds, and then one a little higher than that. Justine did her due diligence on the research, and the references that this company gave us, DEM, and if you can see there, the City of Lethwa, Garden City, Pittsburgh, and Wichita YMCA have all used this company and had good results, and said that they were good to work with. So, I present to you this request, recommendation to award the bid to DEM Enterprises LLC for $72,456, and Justine, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Good. Thank you. Anything to add by the citizens?
What would have created such a massive difference?
We're going to need to have a motion first before we...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll learn.
That's all right. It's okay. I would go ahead and entertain a motion, though.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid to repair, sandblast, and paint pool shell to DEM Enterprises LLC for a cost not to exceed $72,456.
Second. Moving in second now. Go right ahead.
What would have created such a massive difference in the bids?
That's just with any companies in any kind of project. Some of them have a lot more overhead, and so they have more advertising.
Some are farther away and have to pay people to...
They have a lot farther to travel to get here if they're from farther away, you know, may have to put their staff up in hotels. Justine, you got anything to add to that?
That explains it, okay. Yeah.
Other questions, concerns? We'll strike down this way.
That's great.
Sure.
I did notice the one picture. It looked like there was that dropping of the floor around by the gunite. There's no repairs that are necessary that, I mean, the damage, there's no damage that's serious that can't be repaired in this particular...
You speak to repair gunite. Is there any full depth?
Is there anything seriously damaged that we have to be concerned about long-term?
It's hard to tell if there's a paint covering it. Once they sandblast the layers of paint off, we'll have a better idea of what was going on. Most of those, just by looking at it, it's paint on there. They said that most of that is very easily repaired with the product.
Very good. That was one of my questions, too. Sir?
Yeah. In seeing that damage there, my other question would be, is, once they're done, first of all, they're doing the whole shell, right, everything in the end, right?
The inside, yes, where the water is contained, yes.
Okay. And then, so, do they offer any kind of warranty with this, or is that beyond the scope of...
No, there's, I mean, there's some kind of warranty. I'm not sure what...
One year.
One season.
Yeah, one year.
365 days.
It's one season.
Which ever comes first.
So, it goes with one season, but if something happens between now and then when we open, you know? So...
How long, Justine, how long will this take?
They have 39 days to complete it. They ask for tomorrow.
And they said they were ready, according to Justine. She talked with them.
Going to the pool by May 1.
So, they're going to work in the snow tomorrow?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we've, actually, we've looked under some of the decking and stuff, and there is water has washed in some areas under the decking. We were there last year or when they were digging, cutting in to put the pipe under the deck for the last drop slide, and so we noticed then there was some water flow. We came in then and had the, what's that term they use?
Mudjacking?
Mudjacking type of stuff, but it was more of a concrete that was supposed to be harder than mud, so...
And just filled the voids? Filled the voids?
Yes, sir. There's some of that stuff they use whenever they dig into a trench and they fill it in with more concrete stuff instead of just putting backfield rock in it, maybe three.
So, that was from settling, or was that from water erosion from the pool? Is that what you're saying? There was no water coming out of the shell?
No, sir.
Okay. So, that was all under the deck from water erosion from what?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Okay.
So, I'm saying, we don't know when we get in there and start pulling this off, that what else we might find, but it is coming from somewhere.
Frequently, you'll have pool decks that will fall without any damage to the pool shell because of the compaction that people do around the pool when they put the pool deck on. Not a lot, there's almost no compaction done around the edge because people are worried about the shell collapsing. Now, I don't know about in the construction of that pool deck, but they'll use a lot of bridge piers to stabilize that deck around the pool, so you don't have the deck, the sidewalk around the pool, fall, so...
So, did you just work?
Yours is like that.
Oh, is it?
Mine's like that.
Okay. But, and I know that the shell and the deck are separate, you know, we got the clues to caulking and things, so, thank you for that.
Yes.
Little expert in there.
I can show you other ones that aren't like that, so, there you go. And I would imagine that was the case, so... Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Woods? Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mary? Yes.
Congratulations. Good luck. We look forward to seeing you jump in. I've already jumped in, so we don't need to do that again, not on opening day again.
Oh, and this is the 13th season, so...
I think maybe the new council people that haven't jumped in yet should have to jump in.
Get turned out.
All my sinuses...
Sinuses, okay.
The chlorine will clear your sinuses.
I believe the mayor was the first one in.
That's my point. That's right. There you go. That's what I was hunting and fishing for. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Just asking me a few things beyond the revenue report. SFS Architecture calls a state historic preservation officer, Hoxter or Chippewa. We're on site last week to start design work for the 1918 building and making sure that everything is taken into consideration, money is to be taken into consideration, and the sort of tax credit. So, just want to note that that process has started. Also, want to point out the annual Chamber of Commerce dinner event is scheduled for Thursday, March 29 at 6:30. I'm actually feeling his thunder for his portion of the year. The mayor is going to be a featured speaker.
Ooh.
Mayor McGregor from Edwardsville. Again, that's at 6:30 on March 29. Then lastly, lastly, I want my city manager to report if anybody has driven by the, what we actually call the old mill. There's a lot of work that's been done on that particular site. Maybe refresh everyone's memory and...
It's off.
...fill in some information for those that don't know. The city does own that mill road spur line that goes essentially right next to the mill, and it goes all the way up to the hill, and follows 30 to Chuckout. The owner of the old mill has requested that the city consider selling a portion of that property to them. One of the issues that they're finding are access to their property going onto that front end road. I believe there was a map that was sent out in addition to the packet that shows the area that we're talking about, so I was looking for some direction that you all have to deliver, and that's something that we would...
Everybody's going on.
Consider entertaining, relaunching. There are certain steps that are involved with that survey, it's to be done, chief among the transfer that property to this new ownership.
Are there any concerns with that? Yes?
I was curious, how do we go about valuation of that?
Well, there's a few options, but obviously, the only option is to get it appraised, so that would be of consideration, whether or not the city would be interested in pursuing this. We need to, one, get a survey, there'd be the exhibit that would be done, the title transfer that shows generally the area that we're talking about, and then there's the consideration of the value that would change in the way the land, whatever the land is worth. I would also say that the area that we're talking about generally has city utilities under it. I think it's main lane, so right here, there's a water line or sand or storm line that goes through there, so the point is that it's more or less unbearable over the top of it. There are also some restrictions that we have to make sure, whether or not those are in place, you can't build a certain distance away from rail lines, whether or not that applies to this particular line because it's not active. We need to investigate a little bit more, but before we go to all this effort of figuring these things out, I just wanted to bring this here, especially if these individuals are interested in acquiring, get some direction involved, if that's something we want to pursue.
And with maintaining those easements or those setbacks or whatever, transferring this to a private individual, that would be on the tax rolls then?
That would be fine.
So, that is of an advantage to the city, and I appreciate that. I think we should at least investigate it and see what the expenses would be to transfer or what the value of it is. I don't, is there any concerns against? No. Sounds like you have a consensus, so move forward. Yeah, please.
I have a question. On the map that was sent out, running parallel with the railroad tracks, there was yellow, but next to the building, there was some blue marks, and, okay, wasn't able to decipher that too well, so...
Sure, no, that's fine. The yellow portion was basically showing, all of that yellow is the city-owned property. So, again, the city-owned, parroted line that was given to the city some years ago. The shaded area that is not yellow.
There was blue lines.
That's the area that we're generally talking about, that these folks would like to have, and try to maintain some level of access onto that site. I have a through site, but it's wider than it was when the owners last week, just to go through the interior, and this idea is to try to create some buffer there to prevent people from driving onto this property, hopefully this is the city's property that people are driving across. And then they're going up the hill around the building. You can see there's...
Ruts.
Ruts there.
Four-wheel driving.
But yes, that blue area is an area of question.
Is that, are there tracks there? Is that still used by the bakery? Because in that photo that you guys had, it actively had rail cars by the bakery.
The bakery will use that as basically backup, now, backup train every once in a while with the way to fill it, so it is used to some extent by others.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? John? No. Okay, very good. And we'll go ahead and start the city council items, and I'm going to start right here with our newest council person. Your items for the city council portion?
You mean like I can say what I was going to say?
Whatever you want.
Okay. First of all, I think it's delightful when we can send some people from Bonner Springs and they win first prize at the Philadelphia Flower Show, which is an immense flower show. My great aunt, who was a florist, took me there so many times, but, I mean, whoa! For Donna Schneck and Roger Miller to win first place in the amateur division, I thought that was wonderful. Now, the second thing I have to say is, I did not know when I could speak last week, and all I know is John Claxton has done wonderful things for our family. I'm a klutz and I fall, and he came out and took Louis to the hospital, and he was so kind and was already thinking of things we could do in the house when Louis came home, if he did, which he didn't. He was a wonderful, wonderful leader. I felt like that. And the other thing is, we had a thing at the library the other night about recycling food stuff at 2:00 last Saturday, and I wish you all could have seen it. I remember years and years ago here when we didn't do recycling. We didn't have recycling everywhere, you know, and there wasn't much of a, and then it all came up, and we had recycling. But there are millions of pounds of food waste every year that can be recycled into, you know, so many things, and I just have a feeling, I wish you had been there to see it, what can be done with recycled food waste, and I think that maybe that should be something we look at for gardens and things like that, composting and for things like that. It can be moved into animal food, it can be done, all kinds of things. It was, what was it, an hour session, basically, and it was wonderful. And so, I think we ought to think about things like that. I'm not saying, and now we need a, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that it's maybe the next thing to be looking at with recycling, because it can be done, and it's even, there is recycling into refooding, and it's just really something, and I'm finished.
Very good, sir.
Last Friday night, Mike and Chris, Jeff, and I were, had the opportunity to go to the 1918 building historical 100-year, what do you call it?
It was the Bonner Springs Historical Society, Historical and Preservation Society Annual Banquet.
There you go.
Which was...
Well, anyway, it was very, very good, and just even more cements the belief that we've all had that that can become just a masterpiece in our city, and again, thanks to all. But also, the reason I brought it up was something interesting happened. One, a parent of one of my former students from 30 years ago came up to me and was talking to me and to Jan and I, and I won't bore you with the conversation and stuff, but at the end, her being an older woman and stuff, and Jan and I were there, and I said, where did you park? And she says, well, I parked, you know, out back. And I said, well, can Jan and I, you know, walk you out there? And she looked at me and she says, no, Roger, there's no need to that. She says, I feel perfectly safe in Bonner Springs. There you are. And it just, again, what you've done with the police and how you've brought a complete new outlook and everything to our city, it is, I can't thank you enough, and I know, I was going to write a letter so that you could do, but if you would just pass that on to all the officers, because I know, I feel that way, and I know everybody else feels that way, too, and that we definitely support you, and not to slight our fire and ambulance or anybody else, our staff or anything, but when somebody tells me that they feel perfectly safe in Bonner Springs, that says a lot. I just want to tell you guys, thanks.
Okay, sir.
Internships, do we have any internship programs at the city?
We have it right now for Parks and Rec.
No, none in the administrative or anything like that?
We have, it's been a number of years since the city's, no, we actually did just discuss that idea last Thursday or Friday about maybe, or they bring that program back.
Okay. Also, considering the scale of the entire 1918 police station project, can we get a running timeline, you know, just of estimations of what's going on, what's moving forward, and then all the way through to completion of when doors open? You know, I know there are estimates, and it's a, you know, a living document, it'll move a lot, but we kind of put some stuff in here about the developments and things, but maybe something similar to that, just as a constant update, you know, as saying, because I get, you know, questions about different phases, and I only know a small portion as far as starting, but it's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, I can tell you, Don, so, working with SFS, actually get just that, that was one thing that we had asked him to do, is write us his timeline and schedule for milestones as they're laid out in the RPA originally, so we probably hope to have that by the end of the week, so we can...
That's pretty fast. Thank you. That's it.
Sir?
Just going to mention that the day after our last council meeting, I attended the middle school, high school assembly for the Black History Month, celebration of it. It was a wonderful program put on by Megan Harrell from the middle school teacher, and there was a lot of good programs presented by a lot of the students singing some different skits. It was a very enjoyable celebration.
Yeah. Moore Street, do we have any things coming up where we're doing some repair work on Moore Street? There appears to be a lot of places, especially at the joints of the concrete that are falling apart, and just really tearing cars up.
I looked on Morris today, one thing that we are, we did a payment commission that connects through and into every street in Bonner Springs, and I can't recall exactly where Moore is at on that. I want to say it's in the third year of the program, it's starting to be carried out. It's going to happen over, for the PCI is basically an overlay, it's about three-inch overlay.
think about a three-inch overlay that needs to go down that entirety of the street. I believe we will have the street program bid and ready to go by early next month, so I'm not sure if that particular street is included on that, but it's certainly part of, part of our overall program.
I know that street supposedly has a really good base, and the concrete's there, it's been there a long time and so forth, but it's just like at the ends of each section that where there's joints, that seems to be the, the big problem at this point, so, and I don't know if overlay would actually fix that, or not unless they do something else to it.
Yeah, they would fill the joints, and so, fill in that area, and then it would also have an additional base that would create that sort of driving surface, that kind of typical asphalt.
Moving on to the mayor's report. Yeah, I was going to make mention of the Bonner Springs Historical Society, Bonner Springs Preservation and Historical Society Annual Meeting, but I was very impressed, it was a very nice program that concerned itself with the 1918 building, and how it was 100 years in our community, and they had representatives from different decades through the years share their remembrances, and so it was very, very nice to hear a wide range of different memories. It was also really good, and I was going to compliment SFS on having their representatives there. That shows a level of commitment, not just to the project, but to our community, and so I'm very encouraged with, with their, with that, and hope that the rest of the community recognizes that. Also, since the last meeting, I had a chance to go to the Windup and Johnson County Council of Mayor's meeting, which happened to be at the Johnson County Courthouse there in, I have to get all those words in there right, in, in Olathe, and it's a very nice facility that is not very old, and one of the centerpieces is, at the bottom of their main staircase, is a collection of flags from the different communities in Johnson County, all of which I believe were represented except Bonner Springs, and I made a special point to tell the one, our Johnson County Commissioner, that they had all of them except Bonner Springs represented. So, hopefully, I, if there is a, not that one, of course, that one's wonderful, but if we some, were somehow able to gift the Johnson County Commissioners with a flag for their display, I think they would look kindly on that. They do recognize Bonner Springs is a part of Johnson County also, which is, is nice. We're not, we don't have a large portion of our city limits in Johnson County, and primarily the use there is industrial, and they, they do appreciate that, and so it is recognized. This, that's an area of Bonner Springs that we were collaborative with other entities to have services provided, both by us and by others, so it's, it's, it should be recognized as such, so I appreciate that. Other than that, like I made mention, I've received several compliments on the, the appearance of our new police cars. Also, along with the appearance of the new police cars, the, what appears to be a renewed vigilance on speed limit enforcement, and I reminded people, this is a consolidated effort that started with the radar trailer, you know, and that was put in different parts of the community to help educate the community for those concerns that we've had for quite some time, and it's nice to see that being followed up with a professional, appropriate approach to that. And the only people that seem to be irritated are those that were driving faster than they should have been, which is exactly what I would expect, so I, myself, have to watch, watch that. That's one of my areas of concern for myself, that I try and be very purposeful on. Also, buckling up our seat belts. I'm, I consider myself more susceptible, or should recognize that more than a lot of people, but it's one of the simplest things you can do to provide that courtesy to your family. So, I would encourage everyone to buckle up in Bonner Springs and everywhere else, and follow our posted speed limits here and everywhere else. Unless someone else has something for me, question, concern? Seeing none, we're adjourned.